I'd like to call to order the meeting in the Southborough School Committee Open Meeting, Wednesday, February eighth, two thousand twenty-three. The time is six thirty-two P. M. First on the agenda is public comments. Is there any? I don't see any. So we'll go to new business, principals' reports. Superintendent?
So this evening, we have all five-
Excuse me, and I should add for the record, we are one hundred percent in attendance for the school committee. Sorry.
So we have all of our principals present this evening, and I believe Mr. Ryan will start with an update.
Thank you, Ms. Marne. Now, let's start by talking about our preschool, and our preschool has been implementing a new curriculum focused on early learning, developed by Boston Public Schools. It's been in place for several months now. After evaluating two curricula, our preschool staff chose Focus on Learning due to its commitment to equity and its ability to provide high-quality and culturally responsive early education. We're pleased to report that the curriculum is achieving our expectations and more. Not only is it fostering the development of social, emotional, and academic skills, but it's also embracing the cultural, linguistic, and developmental diversity of our students as valuable assets. Additionally, the curriculum is providing opportunities for our students to enhance their oral language skills and express their ideas through storytelling, which we believe serves as a foundation for all literacy. Overall, we're thrilled with the results of our new curriculum choice. And a little bit about first grade. First grade classrooms just finished a unit in social studies on mapping. Students were able to create their own communities and use spatial reasoning skills to develop a map of their community. Each map had an identity, location, symbols, with all the symbols representing something real on their map. Some of the common themes were roadways, neighborhoods, police and fire stations, town offices, schools, and of course Starbucks. Students then shared their maps with each other. I'm serious about the Starbucks, pardon. Students then shared their maps with each other with the goal of locating certain landmarks. Some of the new proposed communities for Southborough students have are Space City, Big Land, Chocolate Land, and Skittleville. So we'll update you.
I'll start with a professional learning update for Woodward. So this week, we had Landon Callahan from Mass Safe Schools come present to staff on ways we can further support LGBTQ+ students. Landon shared his experience as he transitioned and the positive impact adults around him, especially educators, had in creating a supportive and accepting environment. This was an introductory conversation, and staff left wanting more time to discuss the issues and to learn and share. We're in the process of planning a second session where we'll dive deeper into the subject and address staff questions that were submitted through a feedback survey prior to Landon's visit, but also in conclusion after his short time with us. In the coming weeks, both our second and third grade students will travel to the Hanover Theater in Worcester. Our third graders are very excited to attend the African Folk Tale Program, which celebrates the various folk tale traditions of the continent of Africa through music and dance. And our second graders will see a performance of Hansel and Gretel and Peter and the Wolf. These well-known fairy tales are told through ballet and bring storybook pages to the grand stage. We're also thankful, especially thankful to our Woodward SOS and parent community through their gracious donations and fundraising. They'll be able to fully fund both field trips for students, including cost of tickets, buses, chaperones, things like that. So we're incredibly grateful to Woodward parents and community members.
On February first, it was World Read-It-Loud Day. Just want to give a big thank you to Gentoria for organizing this day for us. It was an opportunity for us to bring our greatest amount of authors in. We had nine authors virtually present to all fourteen classrooms throughout the day. Authors shared their journey as writers, how their writing process works, and they each read excerpts from their books that they selected, and it allowed an opportunity, all of them allowed an opportunity for students and staff to ask questions. And many of the books that were shared, we have in our classroom, so it was an exciting day for all of us. And then this is part near, but a shout out for all students first grade through eighth grade. There's a new contest in town. It's called the YES, which is Youth Expressions of Southborough, and it's being organized by our art teacher and Southborough resident Denise Johnson, and she's encouraging all first through eighth grade students who live in Southborough to use art to show what they love about our town. She plans to select six winning pieces, and they'll be chosen by a panel of her and five colleagues. And winning entries from the Youth Expressions of Southborough will be reproduced onto large canvases and will be displayed in public places across the town. So that's really exciting, so we're trying to get the word out to get students to participate.
Triar hosted its second dance last Friday night. We had over two hundred students attend. It was great, although it was cold outside, the dance floor was heating up. I apologize, Greg, sorry. But this couldn't have been possible without the work of SOS. I want to recognize Carrie Prose. She, the Prose family DJs our events. Mr. Prose is wonderful, and then Mary Rosen takes care of concession. So it was a great, a great night. Kids are super appreciative, and they had a great time, and hopefully can offer one more in the spring. The other story I want to share is a student spotlight. During the fall, sixth grade language art classes focused on expository writing. For the culminating project, students chose any topic and edying audience to focus on. This year, Maddie Hughes wrote a letter to the Bombas Company. If folks are not familiar, they're known for their socks. In her letter, she detailed not only the way she enjoys their product, namely the socks, but how she admires the company's one-purchase-one-donated policy and mission. A few days after, Maddie's mom helped her mail the letter using snail mail. They received the phone call from the CEO from Bombas, David Heath. He wanted to talk to Maddie and to thank her for the letter and let her know that he had shared her letter with his employees, offered her generous gift card in their products, and let her know that she has a job there if she ever wants one in the future. This is an inspiring response and demonstrated to our sixth graders the power of their words. So I want to share that, and Ms. Ferraro shared that with me.
Anybody have questions, any, any principals? Thank you. Legislative update?
So I have two legislative updates this evening. The Mass Association of School Committees and the Mass Association of Superintendents are advocating for a increased circuit breaker reimbursement. So a letter was submitted to the legislators, and the rate from seventy-five to ninety percent would benefit our community in terms of budget process moving forward. So I think that is some advocacy that will help our budget landscape in the next few months to come. Secondly-
Quick question on that?
Sure.
Do you have any sense that this is realistically will come to pass, or is this more of a-
I don't think that we will see ninety percent reimbursement on circuit breaker. However, we do have with a new governor, I think sometimes we do see increases to funds such as circuit breaker, so we are anticipating to see an increase, just not to the level of ninety percent. The other advocacy, the two committees and boards are advocating for our Universal Free School Meals Act. So there's a movement at the federal level to have universal free meals next year funded by the federal government. So we are also trying to advocate on that position. Keith is also working closely with Project Red and is seeing if they have any legislative and advocacy materials that we could submit to help support that cause. And then, secondly, the Governor Haley did file a supplemental budget draft by twenty-three, which was two hundred and sixty million dollars. Sixty-five million of that was, is to support the remaining months of free meals in Massachusetts. The current funding is going to run out in March, and the sixty-five million dollars will allow free meals to extend through this school year. So I think it's something that we need to keep an eye on and in terms of next year, continue to advocate as a committee and as a district.
On that topic of for the school lunches, if they don't pass that legislation, and will we stick with what we decided last year? I'm not even sure, yeah, before September, in terms of how we would fund or, you know, what the prices were that we would suggest to the community for lunch?
That is-
Okay.
And those are the legislative updates this evening. MSBA update. So just a brief update. We did have an enrollment meeting with MSBA on January nineteenth, so members of the Near Rebuilding Committee met with MSBA representatives. We reviewed MSBA's enrollment projections. We had a discussion. We did ask some questions, and as a result, provided additional information that they're going to go back and do some more analysis. Most likely, we'll have a meeting in the next several weeks, and once that enrollment number is confirmed, then the next phase is for the MSBA board to vote on whether to move the district to the feasibility portion of the process.
It seemed to me that was a pretty good meeting. Did you feel the same way?
Yeah, I think it was.
Becky?
Becky, did you think?
It seemed, it seemed-
I think they said we were one of the best districts in the world.
That's right. He said that everything was in right on time, early.
Yes.
Ahead of schedule.
Based on my participation, they were concerned about the school committee, but they said that this participation was outstanding, so.
I mean, the good news is we are in a good place. We, you know, we are meeting our deadlines and our targets, and the goal was always to get the information ahead of schedule so that MSBA could move its vote up to a meeting sooner than what they are anticipating. So we have advocated for that, and hopefully at its next board meeting, it will make a decision. So Dr. Reinhorn and the principals will provide an update on the spring twenty-twenty-two MCAS results.
So you have the slides for the most part there. There are some slight changes, but you have it in front of you. So thank you for the opportunity to present, and I collaborated with the principals in putting this together, but they'll also chime in as it makes sense. Just first, I'll provide a little bit of context, reminders of kind of what we're talking about and how it fits into our bigger picture, and then we'll talk about ELA math and then the science, technology, and engineering. So the purpose of the MCAS and the accountability system is to provide information to families, community members, school system, the state, and it's also, I think, used, maybe think about it even nationally, our state accountability systems are part of the way that we have good information about how to direct resources and assistance. And I probably will say it multiple times that it is only one of many sources of data that we use within the district and that we encourage parents to consider as one of many data points. I think it's important always to start with our strategic plan and think about sort of how this fits in the context of what we're trying to do for our learners and what we're trying to provide. And there are many ways that it helps us to think about how we direct resources and who is achieving and who is not achieving and in what ways. And as we look at our profile of a graduate, I think it's a good reminder that MCAS doesn't measure everything that we care about. You know, there are a lot of things, such as collaboration, that we are trying to develop in our learners, that MCAS is not going to be the metric that can help us assess that. So again, that idea that this is one piece of the puzzle and helpful information. So just a refresher, no MCAS in twenty-twenty. Twenty-twenty-one, MCAS was modified. Students were randomly assigned sessions of the test, but not everyone took everything. So the results from twenty-twenty-one, therefore, it's not a good idea to compare twenty-one to other years, twenty-twenty-one. In addition, the student growth percentile was calculated differently in twenty-twenty-one. So it is, again, not advised to compare that to other years. Twenty-twenty-two, which is the results we're looking at tonight, was back to the typical administration. So we, computer-based testing, all grades, all students took all sessions, and our participation rates were high at ninety-nine percent in all three disciplines. Again, I think as a piece of context, it's important for us to remember who our students are. There aren't any significant changes or trends, but there are some, you know, slight changes in demographics, and so that's just something that we want to think about as we look at the results, because sometimes we're looking at subgroups and thinking about change over time, but also thinking about the proportion of what we're talking about matters, because when we look at things in percentages, we always have to ask percentage of what? Like, what is the N? What is the sample size that we're talking about? So this is important context that we'll consider as we go through. Again, this is really just sort of a reminder about the scoring and, you know, just the four achievement levels of exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting, and not meeting. And this is, the same levels are used whether you're looking at your individual child or whether you're looking at sets of students. When we look at achievement, these are the levels that we're going to reference. So in English Language Arts, what you have on this slide is first, to the far right, the vertical bars are showing you achievement, so with the four levels that we just talked about, not meeting, partially meeting, meeting, and exceeding. And we have two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, and twenty-two for our district. And then to the far right is the state, just in twenty-twenty-two, as a reference point. So when we look at achievement levels, you'll often hear people talk about percent of proficiency. And when they're talking about percent of students who have reached proficiency, we're talking about the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding. So that would be your top two colors, your, the two blues together. And that chart over to the left shows us, for example, that in twenty-twenty-two, for grades three through eight, in aggregate, in ELA, sixty-eight point eight percent of our students were either meeting or exceeding. And you can see in reference to the state, and that's the same thing you're seeing in the bar graph. The other way, since achievement is that, you know, what is your score? That is one thing that we care about, but the other way we want to look at results is to talk about growth percentile, because we want to think about where students are coming from and where they're going to, and what progress are we making with students. So when we talk about student growth percentiles, this can get confusing, but the way growth is calculated is for a given student, it is looking back a year, looking at students who had a similar score a year ago, and then saying for that group of students with a similar score in the prior year, did the child grow the average amount, like the fiftieth percentile? Did they grow more than average for that group, which will put them above fiftieth percentile? Like, someone who grew, you know, at probably the highest level of that group might be up in the ninetieth percentile of growth, and then a student where maybe growth was more stagnated and they didn't grow as compared to those other kids with a similar score would have a low growth percentile. So it's really saying if they started in the same place, where did you fall compared to where those, where other people landed? So growth percentile is calculated for every child, but then we also look at it by school or we can look at it by district or cross grades. So this graph is taking achievement and growth together for ELA. You have achievement on the Y-axis, so that's, again, that proficiency. So the percent of students who are either meeting or exceeding, and you have the average growth percentile on the Y-axis. So the quadrants are really helpful in thinking about this graph, where, you know, the gold standard, what we're aiming for, is high growth, high achievement, which is that upper right-hand quarter, right? So continuing to make growth and high achievement in that year. The star represents the state and for ELA, grades three through eight. So that gives us a reference point. So for us as a district, Southborough, the forty-nine means that our average growth percentile was forty-nine and that sixty-eight percent of our students in aggregate were proficient, were meeting or exceeding. In looking back at recent years, again, not comparing so much to twenty-one, but going back to nineteen, eighteen, and seventeen, we're typically, we're not all the way back. Like, if we think of it as sort of, you know, I think the question people are always asking right now is kind of what was the effect of COVID and sort of are we all the way back? And I would say typically, on this graph, our achievement is more in the seventies, seventy-three, seventy-five, somewhere in there, and typically our growth is, you know, fifty to fifty-five. But we're in, we're in that same range, and we're definitely sort of seem to be heading back to that. So next year, it'll be interesting to see. Looking at it, the student growth percentile, we can also break it down by grade. Again, really important to think of that twenty-twenty-one as just a separate metric. It was calculated differently and not, not a valid comparison.
Since you paused, just a quick question on twenty-twenty-one. Since we keep talking about not using it in the comparison, I'm just trying to think of a better term. Is this a form of a throwaway, or wouldn't that be too harsh? Because it's there.
I know. It's hard, because, you know, the state keeps reinforcing, like, you can't really compare it, but we keep putting it out there, and they're doing the same thing. And so it shows a dip, right? Like, when you look at it, like, the growth scores are lower, the achievement scores are lower. It's more of a sampling when you think of achievement scores. So I would say that the achievement scores are a better, if you want to compare something to twenty-one, I would compare achievement scores, because those, not everybody took everything, but we had some kids taking pieces of it, whereas the growth is actually like a different formula for how they, you know, just the psychometric formula for how they calculated it was totally different. So that would be my thought on that, but not a total throwaway, but not a, you know, because I think it's accurate to say that it shows a dip.
Cool. Because what I was noticing is that in the, on the ELA slide, twenty-twenty-one, the meeting or exceed, their proficiency was seventy-three point five, but twenty-twenty-two went down. So is that because of, was it sampling, maybe?
Twenty-twenty-one was seventy-three point five. Right, like, so the other thing to remember, when you look from year to year, is they're not the same kids, right? And so that's why we do the growth measure in addition, because the growth measure, well, it's not why we do the growth measure, but when you look at achievement from year to year, it's the third through eighth graders that year, then it's the third through eighth graders the next year. Or if you look at, you know, the growth scores by grade level, you know, your fourth graders in two thousand nineteen or your sixth graders in twenty-twenty-two. So you also have to be careful about comparisons in that respect.
Okay. Makes sense.
So, yeah.
Could I ask?
Sure.
I guess for future years, would it be possible, when this is presented, to have another line at the top of that, of the graph, that shows the mean, the aggregate mean over the, since two thousand seventeen or however, so we can compare mean to current year, if possible? Not for now, for next time this is presented.
Over the, for the, for this graph?
No, so if you go back to the-
The blue and gray.
Yeah, so that one. So if, if possible, somewhere either at the top of that, we can have an aggregate mean to compare typically what it's been over the last five years compared to current.
Proficiency.
Yeah.
Sure.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Stephanie, sorry.
That's okay.
Staying on this slide, that point you made about remembering that these are not the same kids, that was like crucial, so thank you for reminding us that. When I look at the change from twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-two, right, because at first I was a little bit alarmed when I looked at the delta of those that are exceeding expectations, how much it decreased, right? So that's the darkest blue. And also the partially meeting plus not meeting has grown over time, so that's the gray. But is it fair to say, so if I looked at twenty-nineteen to today or to last year, that was alarming, because there's like ten, twelve percent gaps there. But if I go back and just use twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen, as you were suggesting, kind of seems, it's more of a five percent, six percent change. So twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-two, our grays are going, changing by five percent, right? And then the dark blue, twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-two, about six percent. Do we have a indicator, or is there a suggested metric that says we need to ring the alarms when we start hitting seven percent, ten percent? You know, we need to, you know, relook at what's happening within our school system when these deltas change by X amount?
Yeah. I mean, I think it goes back to, again, this is, so a couple of things. One is there's a trend that we would expect, given the pandemic, and next year, I think it, like, it's like, okay, let's see, do we see that exceeding continue to come back and, you know, not ring the alarms?
Okay.
However, I don't think there's like a particular cutoff. I think we have to think about, as we continue talking through this, how do we use this data at the school level to think about the kids that are sitting in our classrooms? Because we have to remember, this is third through eighth grade aggregated, and that gives us this big picture view that can be helpful for wanting, in my mind, to ask more questions and drill down and look maybe grade by grade and then say, okay, and even student by student, and then what does other data say? I would hesitate to draw too many conclusions from this in aggregate on its own. Would be kind of the way I would go about it.
Does it, does it make sense to have, to potentially have the standard error so that we can, so then you can make conclusions about whether or not this is a statistically significant difference from one year to the next?
I have to think about that, though, given the fact that it's not the same kids.
Right.
That, that's a crucial fact.
I still think that, I mean, it's, it would tell us more about, like, the significance of the change, but let me think about that, yeah. I, I think the other, like, I guess my overall thought is you can analyze this stuff and slice it in so many different ways, and you just have to be careful, and every once in a while remind yourself, what, thirty-eight problems?
Right.
You know, it's a moment in time, and as we get into more detail, it means different things for different kids and different things for different groups of kids. So we can do all of those things, but I think we have to be careful that we don't kind of go down a rabbit hole that maybe doesn't get us more. So we can do all of those things, but I think we have to be careful that we don't kind of go down a rabbit hole that maybe doesn't get us more bang for our buck. But let's go through a little bit more and then we'll see.
One more thing.
Sure.
So I'm looking at the definition of partially meeting expectations. The written definition, and then of course it defines it as we perform to this level, partially met very low expectations. I guess that could be anything from meeting them to not meeting them. So if you met, is that meeting, meeting some of them, right, is that fair? Cause it's a pretty subjective.
Well, it's done by a score range.
Okay.
I mean, it's, they're literally like, they look at your total
Between four seventy and five hundred, if you will, on that score.
Yes.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah. So another way that we look at the data is to look at disaggregated by various types of um subgroups. And I think part of this, so this is for growth. Interestingly, when we disaggregate by growth in ELA, there's not as big of a differences as when we disaggregate by achievement. Right? So meaning that we are making, we are sort of in that middle range in terms of gro- growth with all of these subgroups. When we look by achievement, we see a bigger delta from some groups to others. And and again, this is where like, it it raises questions, but doesn't necessarily give us the answers. Then we have to go to other data and to dig deeper. I think it's also real, there's two thing, a few things to be cautious here and think about. The far right column tells us the N, how many are included. And so when you say, for example, um, uh, if we look at Hispanic Latino, forty-seven percent are meeting or exceeding expectations out of thirty-four students. A change of a few students changes that percentage. A lot more than if you look at our high need students that are an N of two hundred and twenty-six. A change of a few students won't change the percentage as much, right? So you have to be careful about thinking about the group size. Um, and additionally, um, something that Rhoda and I were talking about, and we always are reminding ourselves is, we need to remember that in this MCAS, when we do by subgroups, we have Ls and former Ls grouped together. And for our Ls, if they are levels one through five, which by definition they are, because they would be moved to being former Ls once they um are reclassified, the MCAS is not a valid assessment in terms of it is almost more of an assessment of their language skills. Because they don't have the language skills yet to fully access it in the same way that their peers do, who are non-English learners. In mathematics, we're gonna look at the same sort of set of information. What I think is interesting as we look at the math, is that in general, we held steadier, I would say, through the pandemic as compared to ELA. So our achievement, although there is a dip, the state had a bigger dip in math than we did. At which, you know, is just what the data shows, basically. So, and and we had a dip as well, but you can see kind of some starting to bounce back on the achievement.
Do we look at the um comparisons to similar districts as ours in addition to the state? And are we seeing the same kinds of patterns?
Um, we do look at similar districts. And in terms of the one I just named about math compared to the state versus ELA compared to state, that particular one, I can't off the top of my head say the comparison, but we do have a tool for looking at comparison districts, yes. And we can pick districts, or we can, they also suggest comparison districts. So in terms of growth in mathematics, um, again, this is where the like you can see where we are in that upper right quadrant, higher growth, higher achievement. So um, we had fifty-five point seven is our mean student growth percentile for mathematics, grade three through eight. And seventy-seven percent of students um were meeting or exceeding. Typical, in in past years, um, we were in sort of the low eighties for that percent achieving, as we saw in the previous graph. And in the growth percentile, we've ranged from sort of the mid-fifties to mid-sixties, so we're pretty close to where we were and sort of, you know, been steady, pretty steady in that area. The state saw a much bigger kind of drop, if you wa- look at that star, if I had a like um animated graph for you, the this, we went further apart from the state and um, have stayed pretty steady ourselves. And you can see that in these growth percentiles, that the two thousand nineteen to the two thousand twenty-two in math for our average student growth percentile is um, really fairly comparable. Up a little in some places, down a little in some places, but again, not the same students when you look from one year to the next. Similar story in terms of looking at disaggregated data for math, that um in the growth, so in math, there are bigger gaps in the growth than there are in ELA when we disaggregate, which I think is, you know, an interesting question for us to explore. But still, there are a lot of subgroups that are sort of in that, in a, in a very similar range for growth. And in terms of achievement, I think part of the story in terms of achievement is, if we're thinking about this as like coming back from the pandemic, that the pandemic had differential effects for different, you know, for some people, uh, for some groups of people and for individuals within groups. It had different effects, and so I think in some groups we have more to make up for, and in other places, I think people were able to kind of hold pretty steady through the pandemic. In science, technology and engineering, um, it's interesting to think about because we take it in fifth grade and in eighth grade, but that, but it is cumulative, meaning that students in fifth grade are assessed on the science standards that they have learned in elementary school, which um means that when our fifth graders took it in twenty-twenty-two, the learning that they had in fourth grade and in third grade during the pandemic is also impacting sort of, you get a cumulative effect. And particularly in elementary school, we would expect the effect to be bigger potentially for fifth grade than we would for eighth grade, mostly because it, the same teacher in the pandemic was juggling all of the subjects in elementary school. And in the middle school, you have a dedicated science teacher. And so although there's lots of the same effects of the pandemic, I think when that's the one thing they were focusing on, um, that probably, you know, led to a little bit less um of losses there. So um, this is in aggregate, fifth and eighth together. But we also, um, I broke it out so that you could see fifth versus eighth in terms of the percent meeting or exceeding, and this is where you can really see, you know, whereas if we compare two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two, it's very steady in eighth grade for the most part. And we have a a bigger drop in the fifth grade, which is not surprising. Like it's this sort of cumulative effect, I think, of a couple of years of impact of the pandemic. But still very high level of achievement, and you know, seventy-five percent um meeting or exceeding. And in science, technology and engineering, we don't have a growth score because they don't have a previous year to compare back to. So that's why we don't have any growth scores in this area. And then we also have the disaggregated data. The, this type of analysis is not where our schools spend most of their time. Where our principals and our teachers spend most of their time is, is at a much finer grain of detail. And they're doing item analyses and looking at patterns within their grade levels, they're looking by standards. And so I'll show you an example of that. We are, you know, then thinking about, what does this tell us about students who need acceleration and who are ready for more? What does this tell us about students who need more support? Um, what might it tell us about barriers to learning that might be social, emotional? So it's part of kind of the bigger picture and analysis. Just to give you a a a quick view of, um, which I don't think we've done in the past, but of what it means to look at an item analysis. The teachers and the principals are able to look at the item analysis by class or by grade level. But essentially what it does is break out the results, item by item. And the what this shows you is for um, the ELA test, I put up as an example, items, um, all of the items, thirty-one items. Each of those is a hyperlink, so if they clicked on it, if it is a released item, they can actually see the test question. So I put an example um, down below, and you can actually do the test question and try it out and see what the right answer is and see, see if you get it right. It tells them what standard it is, what reporting category it is. They can then also look, and we have a few different tools to do this, so there are, people have preferences, which ways they like to do it. They can look at graphs or at tables comparing to the district, comparing to the state, comparing to the district as, versus the school is the same thing in South Borough, because your whole grade level is, the whole district is the school. So, um, but they can say, you know, how did we do compared to the state? Again, they can hyperlink right to the questions, know what standard it is. This is another way that it might look, which, and this is one classes data for the ELA test. And um, they can look at this, and I'm gonna just give an example. They might see, so each row is a student, if you looked across a row. Vertically, each column is a problem, it's an item. So I circled item number twelve. And an item might stand out to the teachers or the principals, say, wow, there are more kids than we would expect who got zero out of four points on this writing response question. What does that mean? Like what, what was the question, what was the rubric? Cut, if it's a released item where we can actually see students' responses, it's, cause sometimes you can see actually how the students were scored, let's look at them. If it's not a, like some of the questions, you can't get the student responses, then what can we figure out just from the question and the rubric? And and this is a problem that I know our um, schools looked at closely. So it wasn't by accident that I picked this particular problem to circle as an example. And then the teachers will look at the problem and they will say, what is, what are the implications? What does it tell us about our students? And they are considering it, and this is part of the conversation, they're saying, well, what else do we know about these students as writers? What other data do we have? What are our formative assessments that we do in school? And then how do we use this to inform our instruction, um, and to think about how we help students best show what they know? Um, cause there were many cases here where they said, that is not what we expected these students to score based on what we see of their writing every day. And the last point I was gonna make about that is that I know for a lot of our schools, they often look at this by grade level. So that they are, have a sense of shared responsibility across classrooms for sort of how our students, because they work together so closely across classrooms as a group of teachers. Okay, that wasn't so quick. Happy to answer more questions if there are any, and um, happy to have the principals chime in if there's anything else.
Um, I have questions. The item analysis is also available to the parents, right? So, um, because I was one of those people that looked through it. And um, so I thought that was great, and I think one of the things that we're doing well, just as the district, I think it comes from your level of grade, as well as from the principals, is just when the MCAS results came out, we say, in, I saw it on, uh, the newsletter, as well as like handed to us with the MCAS, it says, this is only one source of information, right? This is not indicative of your student, like this is information we use to help with that, the programmatic level. So I, I think that's he- helpful and we should continue doing that. This, so going over the item analysis and how it's used for ELA and math, what about our, what are, I guess, I don't know if the questions are for the principals, what are the other teacher, how are the other teachers using it? So social studies teacher, um, the um, science teachers, um, are they saying, okay, I'm gonna make my program, I'm looking to develop my program for my new class. I know who my body of students are. I'm going to do a mapping of these students and just kind of get a general sense of where their strengths and weaknesses, and then I craft my coursework around that? Or does that not, does it really only remain in the ELA and math space?
I'll start. So for our item analysis and a recent stepping we had, it was all around the writing. And primarily looking at the constructive responses and essay responses. So as part of that work, we identified the questions that our students struggled with the most over, you know, a large sample size, not just one year. And then we identified what the writing and language art standards were. Um, and because that's evident, or that's also shared in the um, the released questions. So then, um, with with that in mind, we had a staff meeting where our um, special area teachers were included, our special education staff. So we had conversations around what the writing expectation should be, when they happen to do writing in arts, or what that writing can look like during enrichment lesson provided by, or led by behavior specialists. So that, um, you know, everyone's on the same page and and we're developing, um, you know, the same expectations for what student writing should look like.
Now try to, our social studies teachers do an item analysis with the ELA results. I mean, I think what you'll see across the board in our social studies, there is a lot of, it's, you know, for some classes, it's writing intensive. The open response is a big part of their summative work. So having that, that data point is is critical, um, especially in the open response piece. And to see where, you know, I think one of the things that Stephanie mentioned is that I think we have a tendency, when we get the results, to look at how our students did in the previous year. But we're making sure that we want our teachers, English and social studies teachers, to look at how our stu- about looking at our students in front of them in that given year and kind of take that strength-based approach.
Oh, okay, so you just reminded me too, that it's new students, so looking at the results is not, can't really inform the classes in front of them.
I think there's a natural response for teachers who want to see how my students did last year. I think that's where they're, that's where they go initially. But that's, that opportunity is gone, so what we want them to do is transfer to say, you know, what, you know, here's your course, here's your group of students this year, use the MCAS data to the best of your ability to help inform some of your instruction supports that you're gonna be having uh, in your classroom going forward.
And I think for Neri, I agree with you, Gary. For Neri, when our teachers receive their packets, it's past students, current students, and they'll also look at the 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 year ahead as well, so they're getting a collective um, look at for, that gives them the ability to look for some patterns and trends. I happen to be the one who did a deep dive with Desi this year in response to our writing scores. They weren't reflective of what we were seeing our students produce. The frustrating part was it wasn't a released item, so we look at what we do have access to, ensuring that we're working off the two thousand seventeen writing rubric and following, following what what we have available to us and making informed decisions about instruction from there. And as Steve and my gym, we're looking at writing across content areas. We're, we're writing about what we're reading about in science and and creating an informative writing piece. Or our opinion piece might be something we're reading about or doing in art, so looking for those opportunities.
Any questions? A lot of information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is a lot of information.
Student discipline, we can talk about all of you of the, of the amendment.
Sure, so I have a brief presentation.
So this November, um, we were required as a district to implement, um, disciplinary changes as a result of, um, a disciplinary, um, change to the disciplinary requirements that we're required to implement, fired from November eighth. So what I thought I'd do this evening is just provide you with some context. A lot has changed over the past ten years in terms of discipline. Um, and the amendment that took place actually was a change to the student discipline rules that were enacted in two thousand and twelve. So in two thousand and twelve, um, there were some significant changes that the principals were required to implement. Um, we worked closely with our legal counsel, training, we updated our handbooks. Um, and really the key takeaways of those changes that took place in two thousand and fourteen were highly detailed procedures and process rights. So it was very clear around what rights students and parents had in terms of, um, discipline. And also, um, the limitations were imposed to length, lengthy disciplinary removals. Um, and lastly, um, students who were removed from educational experience had an opportunity to make up work, um, and have service plans while they were excluded so that they didn't miss out on their education. And the purpose of the act, um, which was implemented in two thousand and fourteen, was really to limit the use of long-term suspensions. So, um, many districts and schools were removing students from the educational setting as a result of their behaviors and which led to students not having access to the educational setting. Um, so we also wanted to promote the engagement of parents in the student discipline process, ensure that suspended and expelled students continue to receive the educational services required. And lastly, just to make sure, um, to keep schools safe and supportive for all students while ensuring fair and effective disciplinary practices. So over the past, um, eight to ten years, our schools have been implementing the acts of two thousand and twelve, beginning in two thousand and fourteen. The amendment that took place was actually a change of some of the requirements in terms of act of two thousand and twelve. Um, and we are, we are now required, as of November eighth, to follow some of these new requirements. And so in, prior to November eighth, twenty twenty-two, um, principals, um, or designees or the superintendent had a tremendous amount of discretion around suspending students. Um, and there was a lot of autonomy based on, um, principals' roles and responsibilities. So in this amendment that took place, the amendment has removed the discretion to suspend that it formally provided to principals or principalizing these. So principals can no longer decide just to suspend students. Um, there is a process that, um, they need to go to before making that decision. So now, as a result of the amendment, any principal, superintendent, or person acting as a decision maker at a student meeting or hearing, when deciding a consequence for that student must, so consider ways to reengage the student in the learning process and shall not suspend, not even for one day, or expel a student until alternative remedies have been employed and their use and results documented. So really, um, thinking about how to reengage students, how to use it as a teachable moment and make sure that there's a logical consequence outside of being removed from the educational set setting, whether it's suspension or expulsion. Much of this work, um, for our district is not new, although the amendment, um, started in November eighth. The work our principals have been doing for many years is really, um, using suspension as a last resort and really thinking about the purpose of us and as an organization is about learning. And when students make poor choices, how can we use those opportunities to teach students how to make better choices, to develop skills so that they can, um, continue to learn at a high level? So now what is required, um, across the Commonwealth is rather than suspension or expulsion, it's really reengagement of the student. Um, and these are some examples. So it's really about mediation. Um, so if there's, it's about conflict resolution, it's about restorative justice, collaborative problem solving, community detention, can be removal from extracurricular activities or removal of privileges. But again, it's not suspension or expulsion. Now we're required as a district to really implement school-wide models to reengage students in the learning process. Um, and the principals are engaged in those conversations about what does that look like? Um, we do have some work to do in terms of continued training and implementing system-wide, uh, models across our district. Um, but I would share that we are influencing this new requirement. I think it is not a significant shift for our district. I think prior to November eighth, suspension and expulsion was a last resort. Um, and I think the genesis of this law was really looking at, um, the disproportionality of suspension and expulsion rates across the Commonwealth of, um, certain, um, marginalized students, sort of black and brown students, students who receive special education services, Hispanic. And when you look at our data as a district in terms of suspension or discipline, um, we are not seeing that disproportionality of of how we're applying discipline. I think this work is exciting for for us. And actually, the law actually aligns with the work that we're, we were trying to do. Um, and really gives us kind of a lever to continue that work. Where this can be challenging is that, um, oftentimes, parents might think that there should be an expectation of a student to be removed from a setting as a result of a decision that that student made. Um, and that no longer is an option for us unless it's significant and severe and it poses, the student would pose a threat to our overall, um, school as a result of being present. So I think that, um, principals are are doing a great job implementing, um, this change. We've, uh, we've had several PD sessions on this. Principals are really thinking about how to engage in this work. Um, and we are excited about continuing moving forward with, um, reengaging students in the learning process as a disciplinary, um, response.
Question? Any board members? Could you go back to the previous slide, please? So, consider ways to reengage the student in the learning process. Um, it still seems that there's some wide discretion there. Shouldn't suspend and 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 until alternative remedies have been employed and the use and results documented. I'm going to get a timeframe. This could be a short timeframe, a medium timeframe. So I, I guess you're, and I'm not, I don't see anything wrong with this. You're trusting a lot on two principals in the process because this is still, I think, somewhat discretionary the way it's written. Um, and if you move forward to that last slide, please. That looks like it's a little more specific, you know, there's some specific steps that are outlined or items that are outlined to go through. So it sounds like you're, you're pretty comfortable that that this is being handled well.
Yeah, I think that when you look at, um, discipline and the philosophy of principals around student engagement, s- our schools are already doing these types of responses. So it's not necessarily new. Um, it, you know, I think there were, there were our examples, um, that in the next presentation that will provide, um, kind of a concrete example of what this would look like in our, in our educational setting when a school rule is violated, or a student makes a poor decision, and how we respond in a, for example, restorative justice way.
Okay. You all set?
Actually, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I mean, thank you for the the presentation. Um, I know it's something that, um, I wanted to hear, and, um, I'm glad that all the districts, um, all, all the schools in the district, North, South, and High School are hearing this update. Um, from the principal's point of view, is there, that last piece that you mentioned, which is where, uh, the community members and parents may have a, their own personal feeling of when something should be enacted versus not? Is there a way that, um, I don't know, we can support you in ensuring like that messaging is out there or just by knowing that it's in our handbook, that's it?
That's a good question. I think the one, part of our practice is, uh, student privacy. So, you know, we never share a consequence with, you know, another family. That that work is only done with the the particular student's family. So whether suspension or not, you know, we've always been, you know, faced with reality and perception as long as we do this work. Um, and that just comes with that. And that's, you know, and if we take some criticism because the perception is this, but the reality is this, that's fine because paramount is student privacy. So that just comes with the territory. It, you know, I don't know what the public knowledge is around this change in the law. Maybe we do have to 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 share. I will say that in the last couple of years, as Greg mentioned, you know, especially when when Stacy came on board, you know, having, you know, that perspective, she has brought a lot of these practices with her work. It's not to say that suspension wasn't part of, you know, her approach, but it was always met with education. Um, the easiest thing for us to do with discipline is suspend a child. That's easy. I mean, that's simple. As Mr. Martino kind of outlined, that menu of options, that's where really the work does, that's where the work comes in. And that's, you know, that's where kind of our creativity, our work with parents, you know, what that menu, and it could be a combination of things that were outlined. And it's going to be based, it's a case-by-case basis. It's based on the student's history, it's based on that student profile, it's based on the infraction. Um, so it's powerful, it has a lot of potential. I will say that, uh, you know, I think we are faced with, well, in my day, you know, um, that mentality, this is what would happen, and that's fine. Um, I get that. But we're, you know, what we're trying to do is really kind of, um, you know, take more of a collective approach and take more of a thoughtful approach. Stacy, I don't know if there's anything that you would add?
Sure. Um, just to add to to what Mr. Hershick said and your question, I would just say that in general, this idea of, um, reengaging students in their learning can potentially be a shift in mindset for everybody. So I think it's a shift in our mindset for our faculty. I think it's going to be a shift for families because, as Principal Hershick said, it's this idea of like, well, in my day, this was, there was like a very punitive response to some type of infraction. Um, and I think now what research has shown is that taking that sort of punitive exclusionary approach to discipline doesn't help reengage the students. Makes it more challenging for the students to eventually come back and re-enter their typical schedule. Um, and then also makes the students more susceptible to engaging in these behaviors moving forward as opposed to really getting that educational piece. So I just think in general, it's going to take a lot of time for everybody to see like the fruits of of our labor and, um, for everybody to get on board with kind of a new mindset.
I have a question. Um, so in cases where, and you mentioned this a little bit, and it may maybe not something we have had to worry about as much, but in cases where there's a potential threat to the safety of a student or group of students, in those cases, is what happens?
Yes, so there is a process for that. Um, and it is considered an emergency removal. Um, and there is a team involved to help make that decision. There's specific criteria that we would use to make that decision. But, you know, again, as it, it's, you know, if, you know, the language is, if the person, um, would substantially and materially disrupt the order of the school, um, and in the principal's judgment, there's no alternative available to alleviate the danger and disruption, we could have an emergency removal. So that is an extreme case, um, but there is that mechanism for us to use it, we need to.
I also just wanted to reiterate the point that you made, you know, because in psychology, we know now too, that punishment is actually not, even though it makes sense that you want to kind of engage in a punishment, you think it will correct your child's behavior. It doesn't, right? And so it's more about reinforcement. So I think this follows what we know in psychology too. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Um, grading and inclusive communities discussion.
Sure, so this evening, we have a collective presentation. Um, the leadership team, principals, Dr. O'Connor, Dr. Reinhorn, um, Mr. Boye spent a lot of time thinking about, um, this presentation this evening and in response to, um, some of the intolerance that we've seen over the past several years. And I think in terms of, um, us as an organization, we view our work as a learning organization. Um, and really thinking about how do we create environments where it is safe to learn? And how do we respond when we do see, um, students who are making decisions of intolerance? Um, so we'll provide a context, and each of the principals will speak, and then Dr. Lipton O'Connor will, um, conclude, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. So one other thing, uh, one of the important points is that, you know, we do, um, center our work around our core values of integrity, equity, empathy, perseverance, inclusivity, and respect. Um, and Dr. Reinhorn spoke about the portrait of the graduate. What are we trying to accomplish? We know that our students will be living in a far more diverse world, um, neighborhoods, um, and environments, and that it's really important, um, to have empathy, inclusivity, and respect as they leave for the next grade level for school. Um, and there are times when, um, students' actions are incongruent with inclusivity. And how do we respond as an organization when that happens? And what approaches do we take? Um, so we'll be speaking to that this evening. So, um, Dr. Reinhorn did share this data, so we are culturally, ethically, linguistically, a very diverse community. Um, and this is just some data around who we are. Um, and this will change over time. And then within the, um, student enrollment data, we also can look at, you know, students are Ls, are students who require special education services. Um, and I think it just speaks to kind of the changing demographic of the community of Southborough, which is very exciting. So some of the work we do, and educators do an excellent job, classroom teachers, is really building, um, classroom cultures, school cultures, um, which are complex webs of traditions and rituals, um, that are developed over time by teachers, students, parents, and administrators. Um, and those, that work really allows us to respond to crisis. And when there are crises, we built that foundation to try to, um, move forward to ensure that there are logical consequences, um, and those are used as learning opportunities. Um, so, and cultural patterns are highly enduring, um, and they have a hi- a high impact on performance and can really shape, um, the ways our students think, the way people think. Um, and shaping school culture is the heart of leadership. So the work that our principals do, the work our teachers do, um, every day really is essential in terms of building safe climates and culture. So when we think about our district, school climate and culture, um, much of the work that we do on a day-to-day basis is really around making sure that we have, um, high engagement, um, a high level of safety for our students in really exciting environments. So in terms of engagement, we talk about, um, cultural and linguistic competence, building relationships. relationships, um, student to teacher, teacher to student, student to student, uh, family to educators, um, and that really school participation is exciting, um, and meaningful for our students and parents. In terms of safety, we really think about emotional safety, uh, physical safety, bullying and cyberbullying, substance abuse, um, emergency readiness and management. So, again, um, safety is really important. If students don't feel safe, if our educators don't feel safe, um, it's really difficult to learn. And lastly, environment, so thinking about the physical environment, um, so our buildings, the instructional environment, teachers, uh, spend a lot of time thinking about how to organize and structure their learning spaces, physical health, um, mental health, nutritional health, um, and then discipline in terms of, when students make poor choices, how do we respond in a way that is re-engaging and educational in nature? So, um, you know, we are a learning organization, um, dealing with students who are learning, and students will make poor choices, um, and mistakes. And at times, um, they'll make mistakes that are dangerous, disturbing, and disruptive. And we have to keep in mind that, uh, an incident of bias or intolerance does not define us as a school or as a district. In many ways, it's how we respond to those incidences of, of intolerance and bias that really shows the strength of, of our organization. So, this evening, to the principals, we'll talk about some of the work that they're doing in their buildings, um, how they respond to, um, responses of bias and incidents, and then we'll answer any questions. So, intolerance manifests on themselves in many ways, name-calling, slurs, sexual harassment, casual put-downs regarding race, ethnicity, gender, size. I think people, um, all have experienced, um, this at some point in their lives. And when there is, um, an active intolerance in our district or in our schools, now, we do have a process in which we move forward with. The first thing is, safety needs to be maintained and established as quickly as possible. We denounce the act. Principals do an excellent job investigating. We involve others. We try to provide the community with accurate information and dispel any misinformation. We support the targeted students. We seek justice, um, avoid blame, and use it as an educational opportunity to re-engage. Principal Hershak mentioned student privacy. And then lastly, um, whenever there is an act of intolerance, there's always, um, support, healing, and repairing, and that does take time. So, I'll turn it over to Principal Ryan to talk about the FIN school.
Thank you Superintendent Ryan. At FIN school, we take pride in a whole community, whole school, whole pro- child approach, embracing all families as individuals, you know, in families and individuals. We start by creating a inviting school community, do this through our parent and family connections before students actually step foot in our school. We highlight the tenants of acceptance and how we're an inclusive district and school, and what that means when individuals step through our doors. For our students, we take a very firm developmental approach. We believe it's never too early to start conversations about diversity and respecting and celebrating differences. There's an innate curiosity with all of our children coming in, three, four, five, six years old. We promote, um, what community means and what that means for all of us, and how members of the community support each other through our connections. In early childhood settings, students often ask questions about individual differences all the time, all the time. We view these as teachable moments that we can use to help develop a foundation of understanding and greater acceptance. And in practical terms, you know, we use stories, books, activities, and thinking about, um, the, kind of the modes, if you're looking at the slide, our base foundation is really with staff, parent, and guardian training. I mentioned about the welcoming school environment, that's part of our entire district. We do a lot of staff training, uh, the Anti-Defamation League, Windows and Mirrors, anti-bias training, our cultural literacy checklist for our libraries, uh, family orientations and presentations. Katore, you mentioned like, what can we do to help get the word out? Having families come in and having presentations and that connection is really helping to create more awareness. And then if we think about our schools and our responses in terms of tiers, tier one being the whole child, whole school, community approach, um, it's really about connections, those connections building to a culture and a climate of our community and our school. And you can walk into any of our schools and feel that climate and feel that connection. All of us are, are different, but our schools are very inviting. Uh, we all subscribe to the golden rule, we have morning meetings, all about me, who our students are, what's important about them and their families, um, student voice and expression, um, little things like FIN has talent, Freedom Fridays, that help kids feel like they're part of the community and get up there and showcase themselves. Al's pals at the preschool level, and most recently, Katore, you were part of the celebrations around the world, highlighting, uh, some events that are significant for, uh, our diverse nature. And then tier two, small group work, which has a very specialized focus, uh, direct instruction, lunch bunches, social groups, different programs and activities, the unthinkable's, classroom meetings, structured recess plans, and then moving into a more specialized focus. Tier three, individualized work, student-centered planning, um, again, direct instruction, individualized behavior plans, restorative practices, community support agencies, South Borough Youth and Family Services, um, parent and guardian, teacher and student meetings.
So, while, um, there's certainly differences between all of our buildings, there are themes that are gonna, you're gonna see throughout, um, and I, I would say that, um, to create an engaging and compassionate, um, and, and safe school environment, uh, we focus on staff training, whole school learning, small group and individual intervention. So, um, a lot of those areas, um, Sir Ryan has already mentioned, but, um, I'd like to highlight as well for Woodward. So, as far as staff training, um, over the past several years, faculty and staff have received training in professional development focused on providing students with windows and mirrors and to cultures, as well as culturally responsive teaching practices. Earlier this year, staff received training from the Anti-Defamation League on how to recognize and combat microaggressions while creating inclusive school and classroom environments. As I mentioned in my, um, monthly update, on Monday, we had Landon Callahan from Mass Safe Schools present to staff. Mass Safe Schools is part of a DESI initiative that provides training to districts on ways to promote inclusive learning environments for all, especially the LGBTQ plus communities. Staff have also been trained in open circle curriculum and the principles of mindfulness. Our ELD educator has led Woodward staff in trainings focused on cultural differences and cultural norms as a way to better understand our students' experience and strengthen relationships outside of school. Later this year, Woodward staff will take part in that QPR, which is Question, Persuade, and Refer training, um, that is in partnership with South Borough Youth and Family Services. As part of our tier one approach, so this is what all students are getting, um, aside from, uh, the staff training, um, students and staff participate in our monthly care theme, care assemblies. Our care themes include responsibility, acceptance, uh, respect, honesty, perseverance, generosity, cooperation, friendship, and compassion. During our assemblies, we also have a number of guest speakers and presenters who talk about the importance of empathy, inclusivity, acceptance, and strategies for building healthy relationships. Students receive weekly enrichment lessons created by our behavior specialist and ELD teacher, which reinforce our monthly care themes and celebrate cultural differences. During our monthly connection time, or excuse me, during our morning connection time, teachers lead classroom discussions and reinforce those monthly, uh, care themes. We have begun using the social, academic, and emotional behavior risk screener, which is the Sabers Universal Screener, to gather data and inform school, classroom, and small group support strategies. This year, we're planning for an SEL Day on March tenth, and will include guest presenters, visits from therapy and emotional support animals, and mindfulness breaks. As far as our tier two support, so that's now looking at, uh, the small group support, where we've identified students who might need a little more practice and, and, um, specific skill training. So, in these small groups, students would work with our school psychologists, behavior specialists, speech and language pathologists, in social groups, lunch bunches, and peer power groups. We use programs like the unthinkable's or flexible thinking, and then the zones of regulation, which is designed to help students with self-regulation strategies and skills. In small groups, students also work on skills such as emotional regulation and friendship building. And then finally, as far as individualized instruction, so that would be our tier three or most specific interventions. When we think of tier three interventions, we are talking about explicit individualized instruction for students. This may include one-on-one counseling with our school psychologist or behavior specialist, counseling in school with our, this, um, South Borough Youth and Family Representatives, as well as behavioral interventions when, if the time were to come where, um, you know, the student might need more redirection or to identify this as a teachable moment, um, then specific interventions will be put in place. And then, uh, lastly, the use of logical consequences, making sure that, um, students understand, um, their impact of their actions and what would be a logical consequence to follow those actions.
As mentioned previously, our work is grounded in our shared school improvement goals and action steps, in particular within the equity of opportunity to foster culturally responsive and inclusive classroom communities and school environments that provide equal access to learning for all students and to meet individual needs. At MIRI, our staff also received ADL training, and we continue to embed the learning into our daily practices. As a school community, we have our PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention System, which is grounded in the five pillars of being ready, responsible, respectful, safe, and kind, with defined expectations for each pillar, what it looks like, what it sounds like, and how it can be modeled across the school community. And they also align with the five castle competencies of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. Students are recognized for demonstrating these expectations and celebrated, celebrated for their independence in doing so. Our whole school monthly meetings are used for student spotlights, ways in which students can demonstrate how they are interacting within the community. For example, this week, one of our students shared how she volunteers at a horse rescue farm, um, two days a week. Next week, we'll be inviting the Worcester County DA's office in to talk about cyber safety, and also offering a pa- a parent, um, presentation in March. It's a, also an opportunity to reinforce our expectations, um, uh, in connection to our PBIS, and then Mrs. Turrio introduces first chapter read, which encourages students to read from a variety of, uh, genres within our classrooms. We continue our windows and mirrors work, um, in inventorying our texts to identify gaps that have allowed us to select books based on our findings, that reflect students' identities, experiences, and motivations, which, those are the mirrors, and provide insight into the identities, experiences, and motivations of others, and that's, those are the mirror, the windows. This action step within our goal has led us to create our twice-weekly buddy classroom work, where we engage in our teacher-directed one-school-one reads, using culturally relevant literature. Next month, our students will be participating in Understanding Our Differences programs. This is, uh, it'll be for fourth and fifth graders, and it's an, um, interactive disability awareness curriculum that teaches children to see the whole person and bu- better understand various disabilities. The Understanding Our Differences program educates school and communities and fosters respect and inclusion for people of all abilities. For tier one, we too have administered the Sabers, and we also have a recess connection survey. We use this data to help us begin our placement process. It helps to us to ensure that each child, each student has a peer and adult connection across our school setting, and it, and the instruction and learning occurring in our buddy classroom is also driven from this data. And we too will, will be participating in the National SEL Day on March tenth. As part of our two in, tier two interventions, we use data from both of those surveys to create specifically designed lunch groups based on targeted skills, and also develop recent recess plans, and we work in collaboration with South Borough Youth and Family Services for both. And it also helps, um, the, the communication between our, our staff and the South Borough Youth and Family staff and their interns. It's a nice connection. And for our tier three, this includes individual counseling and the development of behavior support plans through collaborative work of our student support team.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak on this. I will let you know, as Principal Trotier, when I've had to send out some communication when these acts have occurred, you know, I've been disappointed and disheartened, um, when these things have happened, and I, I realize it's a community issue, not just a school-based issue. But when they do occur, they do require us to reflect on what we're doing, so I do appreciate, you know, this time to, to have this discussion, because I think it is an important discussion. Like my colleagues mentioned, I think at the core of our work is really creating a culture in a building where students want to come to, come to school every single day. And we go to great lengths to providing a, you know, a culture that's built on, um, inclusivity, respect, and acceptance for all, and we do a lot of things to promote that. It starts on the very first day, um, with a, a longstanding tradition of our first two-day celebration, where we have a kind of a community theme which is carried throughout. Like my colleagues mentioned, guest speakers are, um, something that we've used, but we promote, um, our district and core values on a regular basis. We reinforce school-wide, school-wide and classroom expectations, and our adults in the, the building model those expectations, uh, daily. Beyond that, we also know that connections are so critical for our students, and we prom- and it's been a mission to ensure that, um, the students in, at Trotier have an adult connection in the building. And this doesn't just happen, well, it does happen organically, but sometimes we need to manufacture those opportunities as, as well. This year, we, uh, conducted a student survey on school climate, and we looked at what students, um, preferred here at Trotier in terms of, you know, traditions, opportunities, and learning modalities. We were able to use that work as a springboard with our teachers to kind of promote that school-wide culture. Just recently, we just conducted our DOT activity, where we asked, um, every, you know, uh, adult here in the building if they had a personal connection with the students, and we inventoried that. And so, we're now analyzing those students that do not have those adult connections. We are then, um, teachers are now going to identify students, they're going to try to manufacture those adult connections, and we'll discuss as a faculty, the best ways we can promote, promote those adult connections. So, that is really at the core of our work, but we also know that, um, where we, our students are developmentally, we have to have a direct conversation about these issues. And so, we've been navigating those, um, because we know developmentally, our students need to take those conversations on, because more of it is expected, uh, of them the older they get. And so, some of the things that we have done, um, as we've touted before, we've worked with the ADL, we're very, we're in year two of our peer mentor program. This is, uh, where our seventh and eighth grade students have been trained by the, um, Anti-Defamation League, and they run sessions for our sixth grade students to talk about, um, issues of, of race, uh, acceptance, and inclusivity. It's run by, uh, Mrs. Lunder and, um, uh, Mrs. Jenks, and we're very proud of that work, and it's expanding, uh, each year. In addition, um, I've mentioned in the past that we have undergone our genocide education work. Our social studies in LA Department has, um, reviewed their, their curriculum to see how this work will be taught throughout the three-year experience here at Trotier. So, students will explore, you know, issues of genocide, um, you know, in, through literature and through history. As my colleagues mentioned, our windows and mirrors work has really resulted in curriculum audits, where teachers review themes of race, bias, inclusivity within their content areas. We've also provided faculty training to support our LGBTQ plus community, and we continue to offer our GSA lunches for our students, uh, throughout the course of the year. Recently, we just launched our first community conversation, uh, in recognition of the Holocaust Remembrance Day, in which our students explore the themes of, uh, bias, hatred, and antisemitism. What was most powerful about this is that this was not led by administrators or our guidance counselors, rather that it was done in homerooms, and so, every teacher in the building led a shared lesson and had a shared experience. So, they led the lesson, and then they had, um, follow-up conversations. The feedback has been positive, um, and has, is, will be a springboard for, uh, future community conversations, which will include, um, looking at, um, neurodiverse, uh, acceptance. We'll also be looking at Mental Health Month, and we'll also, and in, um, um, and in June, we're gonna be looking at Pride Month, exactly. So, so we're very, you know, and, and Black, oh, sorry, and then, uh, in February, Black History Month, I think our next community conversation is next Thursday. I think our next community conversation is next Thursday. So we're very proud of kind of the maintenance and the prevention work that we've done, but we also know that these behaviors will occur. And I'm going to turn it over to Stacy, and she can talk about that. That's still your intro.
No, you're good. All right. So Mr. Hershak highlighted a lot of the steps that we're taking on a daily basis to create a safe and inclusive school community and environment at Trotter. As Mr. Hershak shared, we do know that there have been incidents that have occurred. So once that happens, I want to speak to some of the response to that. We know that when an incident occurs, if it's an act of intolerance, it's very critical to have a comprehensive response to that. So what we do is we really use a restorative disciplinary approach, which is coupled with an educational approach for the student because we know ultimately the goal is for the student to learn, grow, and make better decisions moving forward. So in terms of the restorative practice or restorative approach, it's really a focus on relationships. And we've talked about relationships like pretty much this entire time because that's what helps prevent a lot of these concerning behaviors that we might see. So the restorative practices focuses on that relationship building as well as any harm caused. So it's focused on how we repair harm, how we restore, you know, some of the trust that has been broken. And it's less focused on "I broke a rule" and seeing it as just the idea of a rule and seeing our role in it and how our actions have impacted others. We know that school is meant to educate, not punish. So as I had mentioned earlier, it's not, it tends to not be a punitive approach, but again, approach to reengage students in the learning and help them better understand how their actions impact others, both in a positive way and also a negative way. We do tend to create an individualized approach when we have a situation that occurs. So when I say that, it's not kind of like a one-size-fits-all approach. It really just depends on the student or students who are involved in the incident. So some of the factors that we might take into consideration after an incident occurs are, you know, is this student or these students, have they been like frequent offenders? Is there something that's happened in the past where these students are engaging in unexpected behaviors? And what have we looked at? Because of course, if it's an anomaly, then that's, you know, we would approach that in a different way than we would approach a student who, you know, is continuing to struggle. We also tend to look at learning profiles. So say, for example, if a student has a diagnosis of ADHD and has a tendency to be on the more impulsive side, we also want to take that into consideration in our response because we want to make sure that there's some psychoeducation around how we manage, you know, some of our feelings, thoughts, and actions, especially in the moment, and support those students accordingly. And then again, similar to what Superintendent Martineau shared in terms of using alternative approaches to supporting students and reengage in the learning, we also want to look at what have we used for this particular student or these students in the past? Has that been effective? If not, we're not going to do the same thing again. We're going to implement other approaches in terms of, you know, really supporting the learning. Obviously, our overarching goal is to help students understand how their actions impact others. And we usually do this with a very specific focus on one of the Castle competencies, which is social awareness. Social awareness tends to focus on perspective-taking, embracing diversity, empathy, and then also respect for others because those are sort of like the core responses that students really need to build and learn in moving forward and making good decisions. I wanted to give an example of one of the incidents that happened actually last year, which sort of might give you some context and a sense of how we respond in these situations. So last year, we had a small group of students who engaged in antisemitic acts. In that, we responded in a way where those students worked together for an entire day, partially with myself, some with Mr. Hershak, a bit with Dr. Reinhorn, to engage in conversations around antisemitism, acts of hate and bias, to better learn and understand how their actions impacted the school community as a whole, impacted other students who were, and other adults who were also there at the time. So, you know, some of our focus was on discussions around antisemitic acts. We focused on, we used the Pyramid of Hate from the ADL to talk about the escalation of these acts of hate and bias. So the Pyramid of Hate just focuses on, has like this, the bottom part of the pyramid is biased attitudes, and then kind of shows the escalation all the way up to genocide, for example. And so that really helps students kind of put into perspective how their actions, their words, impact others. So that's, and then at the end of that day, we have the students meet individually with their guidance counselor to process the day. One of the biggest questions is, what did you learn? But what else do you want to know? How can we support you moving forward? Because anytime we're recognizing there is one of these, you know, acts of intolerance or concerning behaviors, we want to make sure that we are providing a level of support that's not just one time immediately, but also following the students through and being able to monitor their behavior and their progress so we can identify how to best support students. And then lastly, I know Mr. Hershak mentioned this, is anytime there is an act of intolerance in at least the Trotter community, we do send a letter home. We try to balance like the student confidentiality and privacy with also being very transparent with our, you know, families about what happened. So I think that's something that Mr. Hershak and I continue to talk about in terms of like how and what information we communicate home and what that looks like. One of the pieces of feedback that we received is, and we realized this too in working with some students this year, is that the students don't see those letters. And so in fact, in some of my work with the students, I actually read one of the letters, and they were pretty surprised, you know, that that was part of our response in communicating to families. So I think that was eye-opening for this student as well. So that's something that we're working on trying to balance. I think that's pretty much it on my end.
So we've heard a lot of all the great work happening across the schools. I get to go last because all of this work is really grounded through that lens of social-emotional learning. And we really think about social-emotional learning as really a vehicle to create safe and inclusive school communities. So I always like to just show the castle wheel again. And to me, there's so much on that image that each time I look at it, I kind of see more. You know, we start with us as individuals, how we show those core five competencies, and then we think about what that looks like in our school classroom, our school community, our partnerships with families, and then that larger community and society. And it's, you know, as we've talked today, we really think about these competencies from that developmental lens, right? When we have our youngest students coming into the Finn School, you know, what a relationship, a positive relationship looks like for a three- or four-year-old is very different than what it looks like for a thirteen- or fourteen-year-old leaving Trotter and getting ready to move on to high school. So we really try to think about these skills from that developmental lens. And also knowing students are going to make mistakes, they're going to make bad decisions. And as we've said, the research is really clear that the positive reinforcement, where we can encourage those positive behaviors and reinforce students, catch students being good, that really is a lot more effective than the discipline piece. We really want to think about social-emotional learning as a way to affirm all of the cultures and identities that are represented in our schools. And SEO is really a strategy for that systematic improvement in our schools. It's not a reaction to a student issue or for only a subset of students who might be at risk. It's really a process for systematic improvement across our schools. It's also a way to help uplift that student voice and really promote agency and civic engagement. It's also really focused on the adult and our competencies as adults, how we as adults want to strengthen those practices in our schools and communities. And again, thinking about SEO as that process where we engage with our students, our families, and our communities is really authentic partners in this because I think as we've all said, this work is bigger than just during the school day. It really impacts all of us, and it's kind of work that is never finished, right? It's always something that we're continuing to think about and get better at. So I think I'll stop there, and you can go back to Superintendent Martineau.
So I think that obviously tremendous amount of information. I think that, I just want to thank the principals for organizing a thoughtful approach to how we respond to acts of intolerance. It is a complex ecosystem that we work in, and I think at the center of the work are students. We are a learning organization, and we take every opportunity to help students learn and grow when there are acts of intolerance or poor decisions. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Janice first. So thank you for that presentation. Interesting. Do we track as a district, so I guess I have two questions. First of all, do we track kind of the number of incidents? Because it felt like just recently this year, there were quite, we got quite a few notifications, one after, well, three. And I'm wondering if this represents an increase from prior years, if we're looking at it, or if you've noticed any kind of increase in your schools or the ways in which students are talking about issues like this over the last, you know, several years?
That's a good question.
That's my first question.
I don't think we have necessarily, I would agree. I think the one thing that we are, I think, as Stacy mentioned, the transparency piece is so critical. So it feels like it's more. I don't, that was not a practice that we did like seven or eight years ago. So, and then I think what we are doing is that we share out kind of the majors, you know, and then, you know, the minors are probably not going to be shared. So, but we haven't tracked it as a district, but I would say that, you know, in the last two or three years at Trotter, we have been tracking it internally, but it has not been disseminated, so.
I would just add that I think, you know, this is also a problem. Not only Gary made the point a while ago that this is community, but it's also national. And that, yes, there's been an uptick nationally, I think, in a lot of types of incidents. And so it wouldn't, and I think on college campuses, in K through 12 environments, and outside of schools. So although we haven't specifically tracked it, it wouldn't surprise me if we saw that there was some degree of an uptick.
And then my second question, which relates to what you just said about community piece. So, I mean, obviously, I think it's a challenging thing to address because you're addressing it in the school, but potentially some of these kids here were modeled certain things from family and home. So I'm wondering, are there ways in which the district can work with family members, whether it's through, I don't know, workshops or didactics? I don't know like what the role would be of linking community to what's happening with some portion of these kids to help kind of a wider, not just in school, but the community piece of it too.
Yeah, we've employed the help of coaches in the community. We've employed the help of, you know, our school resource officer to have these conversations. So I think it's just, and that's very important to show that is a community issue. I know we are going to have a parent forum. Stephanie, I apologize, when is the date?
The Anti-Defamation League.
Yes.
Rodeo, do you remember?
March thirteenth.
March thirteenth. Yep, thank you. So that will happen. But in terms of making, have that community outreach, I know that we have brought in, you know, folks from the community to help extend this work, so.
So I'll just add that I know Dr. Logan O'Connor and Mary Ellen Duggan and Northborough, we well created a parent workshop series focused on helping parents gain new skills and knowledge about the role of parenting. I think in the future, how to, you know, how to support students in terms of being upstanders, how to respond when they experience intolerance. Those are all important aspects that we can engage our community, and specifically giving skills and information to our parents.
And then the last thing related to that, I would say, is the Coalition for Equity and the ongoing work there and the events and, you know, opportunities in the future for speakers, but also the cultural, the music festivals and things. I think all are ways that we're trying to engage more broadly.
Yeah, so I just, I don't have any big questions. I just, I'm so glad we're talking about this. I do think it's something that's been on everybody's minds, given recent events and given the world in general. And it's, you know, it's so interesting hearing all of the things that are done. It's just such a huge array of efforts and programs and kind of woven into all these different aspects of school. And what occurred to me is that it's really, it seems like it's two-pronged. It's sort of, you know, aimed at helping this kids develop in a way where they're not inclined to do those things, and also helping the kids who are in groups that, you know, where things happen, that they could feel marginalized or put down. And it's really just so wonderful to see all the efforts. And I, you know, as people have been alluding to, you know, we're not immune from the environment that we're in. And so unfortunately, things do happen. But, you know, I do really appreciate, and I'm sure a lot of people really appreciate all the efforts of the schools to do everything possible. Thank you.
Just to, come on, please.
Great summary and report out. I really appreciate it. I don't know how to like say this nicely, but I wish that the adults could attend so that we can get some of the learning and training that's happening here. I think that would really be great. And I know we only represent the elementary school, but doing this now, I think, is going to only like benefit these future leaders, you know, these future leaders when they get to the high school and beyond. Okay, so I took some notes, so I wanted to like go down the line. For Trotter, the letters not being known by the students, I did catch that as well. So I think that whatever solution, creative solution you come up with there, and it's a big school, so something might happen in, over in this wing, over in that classroom, in that bathroom, and party, they don't know. And so when you want to have those discussions with your kids and say, "So, you know, this is, you know, how I would like you to be a supporter, or how you can identify these," they're like, "I don't, what are you talking about? I didn't know that happened." So I think that's definitely an opportunity area. I think what you're doing though already with the responses and then explaining that to the students that were a part of a particular incident, I think, I like that approach. I think that's a great approach. There was something that you talked about where the breakdown of, you said the, I don't know, there was Holocaust, neurodiverse, pride, Black History Month. One thing that I thought maybe is another opportunity to add is a discussion on the AAPI community or helping students to understand that there's this vast array in that population because oftentimes guests group together and people don't realize it's all these nuances. And so I know this only but so many months in the year, but just, I just wanted to bring that up. And it's not, don't worry, it's not all Trotter. Oh, so then, but they're older at this point, so there's more conversation that you can have. The work around genocide education, I think that's so powerful. But I think there's just, to be mindful of the lens that, of what we're actually bringing up to them as examples and cases of genocide that we don't, in effect, kind of pigeonhole that as well because there's different examples, and sometimes we veer on one or two situations and not a breadth that has happened over the centuries. But that could educate them, that could help to really educate them. And, you know, I never, I didn't go to school for teaching, but I just know you have to be very sensitive there, just picking different topics to kind of introduce. And do you have any results from the DOT activity yet, or not yet?
We're collating it.
Okay.
So we're at that, you know, we're at the point where we just collected it all, and now we're meeting with individual teams at this point, so.
And I was at Trotter and NEARI, or what would also? Do you have an adult or a student that you connect with?
Similar to, we do that through our recess survey.
Oh, okay. But it's called something different in each?
But similar.
It's, yeah, I think the goal's similar.
Yeah. I think it would be fascinating to see if... I think it would be fascinating to see if some of the teachers are surprised that they thought they had a relationship with a student and the student's like, oh, you know.
So we, what we ended up doing this year is we actually just had a one-question survey asking students if they felt they've had a good adult connection. So we, we could look back at that and just, cause like we said, you know, we assume we're, you know, I could say, hey, I have a great relationship. And this kid can say, no, no, we don't. So, you know, so we are working through that process. But we're not identifying teachers, or we're not asking students to identify the teachers that they have the, the relationship with.
For ours, well, for ours, we have one open response. Well, the question is, what would you like Mrs. Vandy to know? So some of it's surprising. But, but, you know, give students voice and be able to share something that we can respond, or I can respond to, or we can respond to as a staff.
Yeah. I think this was Mr. Mucci, when we get back to Woodward, where you talked about emotional regulation. I think that age group, that's so important there. So thanks for kind of like sharing that, that situation that you guys are, are teaching there. Because I just feel like that, at that stage, figuring out like, do you act out? Or, you know, communicate with someone or realize like, you know, all these techniques we teach them about, take a deep breath, you know? I'm thinking of Gracie's Corner song in my head. I don't know if the, okay, the Finn, the preschoolers know about the Gracie's Corner. Okay, if you're feeling a certain way, take a deep breath, okay.
Do you want to say it?
Nope. And that's it. Like I just thought that a lot of the, you know, the work that I, I hear is going on with like the training, the books, the videos, the examples, the speakers. Today, tonight was an opportunity for you all to share that. So everyone that watches the recording and, you know, one of our board members is going to write a nice write-up and, you know, the, the community will hear about it. So thank you for that, because people, I don't know if everyone knows like what is being done. And as these situations happen, it's not at the, you know, it's not because there's any lack of support, you know, supportive work that's happening in the school. So thank you for sharing that.
Jess.
Thank you for this. And I think, just quickly, I think the thought that struck me during all this was how all of this isn't new, you know, that all of you have been doing this for so long. As you're going through your presentations and like, yeah, we've been hearing about this stuff for years.
Yeah.
Like you guys have been doing this for so long, like you've been working on this with the kids for such a long time. So I just wanted to point that out, that this isn't like, this isn't reactive. Like, you know, you just started putting this into place because there's been a crisis in the district or something. Like this is something that's been going on for a long time and, and I love hearing about it. And I also love that, I just wanted to say the, what we were talking about, the way that you're doing discipline now. You know, what Gary was saying earlier, that it, it's easy to just suspend a kid and it's much harder to, and it's much more appropriate to go through restorative justice. I really like that. And I, I think, I'm really just proud that that's the direction that we go in. And I think that's a much better solution to dealing with the issues we're dealing with. So thank you for doing that, doing the hard work.
I really don't have any new things to add. I think, I think I would just be repeating some things, but it's, you know, the emotion I have is, it's really rewarding to hear about all the, all the thought and comprehensive thought that you all, I like putting into this, but, you know, all the efforts that everyone is putting into really improving inclusivity. So it's, I like the word also Jess says, you know, it makes me proud to be at least, you know, connected to this, it does. Other comments?
Can I add one thing? We were talking about the adults hearing about this. I, I think we forgot to mention one really important way the adults hear about it is through their children. Cause I think we've seen examples of even really young students pointing out if they see something, you know, being a good bystander. So I think the stu, we're seeing this work over the last few years really come to fruition with our students sharing this back with us, saying, hey, that didn't make me feel comfortable, or this person said this, or this, you know, worksheet didn't represent what I look like. Or those kind of conversations are coming from our students. And I think that's really exciting to see that come out.
Can I have the last word?
Yeah.
It's a good, it's a last word. I just want to, I think educators are key to all of this. So the work that they do day in and out with their students is, is embedded in all this work. And they are the, the key people on a day-to-day basis for our students. But I also want to just thank Jennifer too. I think Jennifer is relatively new position to our district. Part of the reason, the rationale for adding an SEL coordinator is really to build coherence around how we work across our systems. And I think, you know, as, as we hear and learn about all the work that we're doing, I think Jennifer's fingerprints are on this, so thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want the last word?
No, you, they don't want the last word, so. All right, world language update?
So just a, a brief update. We have had world language in fourth and fifth grade at Neri School as a result of kind of the commitment the school committee made several years ago and the learning from the world language study group. Unfortunately, we have learned that our world language educator will be returning to Spain. She had a two-year commitment to go back and she's decided to go back. She's been wonderful and will be a tremendous, a tremendous loss. And one of the things we are talking about and discussing is where to best utilize that resource in the future. So is it in the fourth and fifth grade or is it in the development of a plus program in grades K one? So we'll be having ongoing conversations, thinking about how do we move forward with that position? And how to best utilize that position for our students.
Is she leaving at the end of this year?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a quick, this has to be a quick decision?
Yeah, and we've been, you know, I think we've been talking about it. I think we have some ideas. Principal Ryan has been engaged in the conversations, having conversations with Principal Valente and thinking about what do we want ahead? And how do we move toward a proficiency model versus an exploration model? So that's some other conversation that we're having.
Okay.
Thank you. I thought I might switch it up and excuse all the school board right now. But thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
There is an exciting paving.
No, we got, I got paving.
Circle back to us tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll give you an update. Make sure Gary's still.
Do we want a two-minute break or we good, we continue?
Right, so on to the superintendent's report for the committee. So in your packet is the enrollment report as of January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. So our enrollment remains pretty steady. We added one student since the December report. And we are looking forward as well, keeping a close eye on kindergarten enrollment for the twenty-three, twenty-four academic year. And we monitor that on a daily, if not hourly basis. And if you have to answer any questions. If there are no questions, I will turn it over to Becky Pellegrino, who will provide the FY twenty-two monthly fund, monthly general fund expenditure report, the grants update, and the revolving fund accounts update.
Good evening. So during the month of January, the IMES team created additional encumbrances in anticipation of potential expenses for the remainder of fiscal year twenty-three. It is due to this work, you are now seeing a lower amount on the bottom line of the FY twenty-three budget. So as of January thirty-first, we had just under two hundred thousand remaining or point nine, point ninety percent on the bottom line. At this point in FY twenty-two, we had four hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars remaining or one point nine one percent remaining. So we are closely monitoring this budget, but we feel that by making these encumbrances and setting aside this money that we're actually helping the, the fiscal year budget to close out nicely. So, welcome any questions?
Questions? Right now, we, I don't intend to motion to approve the Southboro Public School District fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget. Monthly general fund expenditure report as of January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three until August.
So moved?
So moved by Katara.
Second.
Seconded by Kamali. Any questions before we vote? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous?
Okay, in terms of the grant funding update. So we are continually, continuing to utilize our S R two funds. During the month of January, we did purchase some additional social studies materials, I think it was for grade three at Woodward. And so as a result, the bottom line on the S R two grant is getting a little bit smaller. We currently have twelve thousand, three hundred and eight dollars remaining. And this grant does have a closeout date of September thirtieth of this year. We did not expend any additional S R three funds during the month of January. We still have two hundred and ten thousand dollars remaining. And we do intend to utilize some of those funds in our fiscal year twenty-four. In terms of the revolving accounts, I have included for you the facility rental and the extended day program revolving accounts.
No, I just said, okay, sorry.
So during the month of January, per facility rental, we did receive just over sixty thousand dollars in revenues. And the projects that have been paid year-to-date include the parking lot paving project at the Finn School. And then at Trotter, we have completed the landscaping work, the roof replacement of the sixth grade wing, and then also an upgrade to the elevator in order to meet state code requirements. As far as the extended day program, we have collected four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars and our expenses have been three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. We continue to trend with our projections and we are starting to compile a fiscal year twenty-four budget for that program.
If I might, are, for the revolving funds, do you see any trends that are concerning or?
Not at this time, yeah. I, I feel like they're trending where we normally, and we're very cautious when utilizing the facility rental. So no, no worries.
I have a question for the extended day balance. Are we noticing, are we kind of on par with what they were doing? Are we doing better than the previous program or, sorry?
We are on par with where we thought we would be. We do have to, at the end of the year, we will settle up with the town in terms of the health insurance. So that is another expense that we will expect to see. But that, the balance that we have in that account will more than cover that. And we had made a commitment following the shutdown a few years ago to make sure that we weren't reserving at least three months of expenses in this account.
Thank you.
A question on the S R two photo. Do you, is there a, do you kind of have a running list of things that you know will help to spend this down before?
They may exceed the balance, but yes.
Thank you, Becky.
Keep with my report.
Thank you.
All right, so next we have capital planning. And at the last meeting, we talked about the milling and paving of the Trotter Middle School parking lot. But this evening Keith will give a thirty-slide presentation.
Parking spot by parking spot, that's the plan.
Give an update of, of the project and also will acquire a vote of the school committee for us to move forward.
Will be able to ask questions after each slide?
After each slide.
Pave the way, Robert.
Oh, boy.
Oh, there actually is a presentation.
Yeah, there actually is, cause we, we thought it would be important to kind of show you a visual. It is two slides, so you won't be up for long, Katara. Or your neck will crick too bad. But I do want to thank Southboro DPW. Over the years and, and working on, on paving projects at the different schools, we have often connected with DPW. And whether or not our needs fit into what they're planning to do for the upcoming year. And typically the paving bid will go out, whether it's annually or biannually, depending on the needs of the town. And very fortunate to have the former superintendent of DPW, Karen Galligan, reach out. We've been in constant communication about a, a ton of things. She was doing this as one of her final projects to go up for the bid for paving for the town. And the Trotter School was considered in that bid as an alternate. Two phases of the Trotter campus was part of an alternate. And overall, they, those bids came in very advantageous, better than we projected. So we are looking forward to moving forward potentially with this project. And I want to give you guys an update on that. So here, here's the grant. Okay, so there were two parts of the project that were part of an alternate. One of the alternates was just this area here, which is where the basketball court is on the cafeteria side, which is approximately twenty-five hundred yards of area. And this is a significantly degraded area on the campus. Remember that Trotter was built on top of a swamp and needed to be rebuilt on top of that and filled. So just through over the twenty-five years of it being in existence, that particular area and the, the underlay and the base has deteriorated. So it does have significant puddling. Also, that basketball court is out of service because those poles also didn't, haven't made it too far. So what we're looking to do in that particular part is to really go down with a deeper milling and grading up to four inches, which will really help balance that out and will get the draining appropriate. There are catch basins along the parking lot line down here that with a very basic pitch will really reduce the amount of, of puddling, settling, cracking, and everything that has caused deterioration in that area. So we are looking forward to that being one of the focus areas of, of the project. The remainder was the second part of the alternate, which would include all of the areas that were, are the parkway, deer foot road, entrance and exit. Some work right on this area right here in particular, which is a turning spot here that can be tricky. There'll be some work there to do a little bit of an extension. And then everything which would be around the track area, including the interior fire lane. And then in the front of the building, not only a fire lane, but the main part of the parking lot and the driveway that, that goes around. All of the paving will end right at the top of the hill here, right around this, this location. And we really thought that was, would capture our needs good if you do take a close drive around. There, there is potholes and other things that have accumulated over the years. So especially for that larger area that kind of surrounds the building, that would be a, an inch and a half, which is very comparable to what we did at Finn. And it's kind of interesting that even the, the square yards here is very comparable to what we did on the Finn project. And the differential of, of a couple, I don't know, what's, what's the difference here? Probably like thirty thousand total between the two? Yeah, I think it was about the difference of thirty thousand. Probably results mostly from the milling that's going to be done for the basketball court to get that right and to get the grade correct. So that's kind of the outline. It does show a couple of figures as far as the square yards. I did triple-check that with DPW and we are on par. And we're, we're really excited to move forward with the project, likely over the summertime if, if all goes well. And then that'll be in, you know, in collaboration with the town and what their needs are and where the equipment is and so on and so forth. But we'll be collaborating with them closely to get it done if so, if so warranted and we're allowed to move forward. Any questions about this exciting project? Yes, Katara?
I have a question. How long does repaving last generally?
It really, you know, if we were to just do an inch and a half mill on the back. It really, you know, if we were to just do an inch and a half mill on the basketball court, honestly, it wouldn't last very long. So I'm really happy that we did get down to that four inch to really do some of that grading. It could last fifteen to twenty years.
I think it depends on how we maintain it.
And how we maintain it, yeah.
Oh, really?
So ten, I think ten to fifteen years is a good.
You realize she's asking you for commitment?
I know. That's why Greg changed it.
I will come back in fifteen years.
And by maintaining, do you need to like seal it, that kind of thing?
Yeah, we need to crack seal, you know, seal the cracks and seal code at every, you know, salt often. But that's relatively inexpensive. I will share that in the capital plan, we were anticipating this project to cost four hundred thousand.
Yeah, right.
This is half the projected cost.
Right.
Which is a small opportunity.
Which is why we would do it now, yeah.
It sounds like the drainage issue is really important.
It is, it is critical. And that's why it was such a, you know, that's why it was separated out, its own ad-alts, to make sure it was defined and separated when it went out to bid. Because, you know, the town did go up for a significant amount of area throughout the town, and that's why it was added as an alternate. So I'm pretty happy with how it came in.
Keith, the pitch and grading that you talked about on the basketball court side, that kind of comes into this green grassy, grass area, or leftover swamp area? We don't have any like restrictions about?
There are basins there that control that area, to make sure it's, you know, going in the right direction through the drains. Yeah, so that, that has been actually a really positive part of the campus, I'd say, over the years. We haven't lost any, that's a retaining wall right there, along that line, and, you know, that's always been an area I've watched closely, but it's done very well. And the storm, torn drains that are along this line perform beautifully, and those are things that are maintained by our facilities that make sure they're clear, functioning properly, so that we don't lose that retaining wall.
Okay. And then what about disruption to, you know, use of the parking, et cetera? How is that expected just to run from June to August?
I really hope so. I mean, that was part of the conversation that we had. We do not anticipate this happening during the school year. It would be a disruption.
Okay. And in the summer, are we using the campus to do other things?
No, no formal programs are at Trotier. They are at Woodward, Nearian, and Algonquin.
Okay, good, okay. Is the basketball court, that'll become parking?
No, it will become more of an open space. The team at Trotier uses that, you know, for morning recess and other things like that. The, you know, the basketball court will be covered, as of now. At, you know, many years ago, their recreation, we engaged in a conversation to have that restored. But because of the pavement, the conditions of the pavement, it was not seen as a place they wanted to do. And although I said, you know, to Tim Davis, hey, listen, we might be doing this, you know, we've engaged a conversation if we're able to move forward with a good grading project on that side. So that'd be for future planning.
There's no actual nets there now?
No, there's no poles there now. Those were removed.
It's not like where it's removing, like, oh, you know, we used to play basketball there on the weekends, or, you know, pickup games?
Correct.
No, it's not even used.
And with the investment they've made at Nearian, Woodward, that's really gotten a lot of the traffic for outdoor basketball.
Yeah. And Fayetteville Park.
And Fayetteville.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the plan, the plan is, you know, to, not to exceed two hundred every time you do any type of digging around or milling, you might find something you don't like and have to do something. So, we, you know, we've added a small contingency in there to cover for that, which was not very dissimilar from what we did at Finn. So, we'd like to move forward with a two hundred thousand expenditure for this. Not to exceed.
Because I think the last, the last estimate was one sixty-five?
One eighty-nine.
One eighty-nine.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, yeah, that's a small percentage. Yep.
So are we voting this for some reason separately, or are we, is this just a part of the, continue to, continue to approve of the capital plan?
Just for our support.
Because we're using revolving accounts, I think it's just good practice to vote this project, to allow us to use the revolving funds account to move forward.
So the number is, what?
See, not to exceed two hundred thousand.
So, alright, private, so entertain a motion to approve up to two hundred thousand of the revolving fund to pave the Trotier parking lot.
So moved?
Katura makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamali. Is that motion sufficient?
Yeah.
Discussion, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll show you pictures of the finished product and stuff.
That'll be our summer emails that you're gonna send.
Yes, it will. I will, I will share.
Alright, so also in your packet is the FY twenty-four budget priorities and the FY twenty-four budget calendar, which I will speak to in more detail in the budget presentation. And the last item, superintendent's report, is the presentation of the FY twenty-four recommended budget. And I do know that the school committee has listened to this presentation many, many times. But for the viewing audience, I will go through the entirety of the presentation. So, our budget process is really driven around our mission and vision as a learning organization. So our mission is quite simple. It's to educate, inspire, and challenge all students with an emphasis of all. And our vision is really around trying to help students prepare for the world of the next grade level, the next school, and eventually the world of college and career. So thinking about how we can create situations and environments and experiences where students become collaborators, creative, critical thinkers, communicators, socially and civically engaged, growth-oriented, and healthy and balanced. So the budget process is exactly that. It's a process that began early on in September, and Becky really enjoyed crossing out one of these accomplishments. But it does involve educators, principals, many stakeholders to get to this point this evening. And it is hard to believe that it is the month of February, and that a couple milestones remain after this evening. That is the school committee vote, hopefully, approval. And then we'll have the public hearing in March, and then town meeting on Saturday, March twenty-fifth, for hopefully the citizens' approval. In terms of when we began the budget process, there were many unknowns, many budget variables. As you can see, those are now known. So the out-of-district special education tuition increase is fourteen percent. That is now known. We are hoping to get some relief from that, but that did not happen at this point. There is potentially some relief from Circuit Breaker, but we have not learned of that number yet. Special education transportation is a known number. Increased energy costs, cost of supplies and materials, and cost of services. And what remains is an unknown. We are still in negotiations with the Southborough Teachers' Association, so that is becoming clear, but still an unknown variable at this point in time. So the budget before you this evening, I would characterize it as a level services budget with a few growth areas and certain programs. So basically, it's the same services that were provided in the previous fiscal year, which are continued to the next. Funding for the budget would increase in order to cover salary and cost increases, and there are no new positions, programs, or services included. And when we talk about a level services budget in the community of Southborough, our baseline is a high level of service. So for some people, they may look at a level services budget as inadequate, but we are, we are building a, our level services budget is a high baseline. In terms of our work, moving through the budget process, so we rely heavily on the school committee's budget priorities. The school committee, as you said, budget priorities each year, which really help us kind of move through the budget process and make difficult decisions. And we also use our strategic plan, Vision Twenty-Twenty-Six, Educate, Inspire, and Challenge, as our, our guides to think about what do we want to accomplish, and what types of opportunities do we want to create for our students. I will not read through the budget priorities, but I think it's important to note that these play an essential role of how we move the budget process forward. In terms of where we are this evening, so we do like to map out and show a table of the process from the beginning with fiscal year twenty-three, to the point where we're bringing a recommended budget to the school committee. So, as you can see, the initial budget request from principals, directors, we started at a fourteen point two eight percent budget increase over fiscal year twenty-three. This is an important exercise for principals and directors, because we begin the process of asking the question, what if money, what if finances were of no concern, what would we ask for? I think sometimes we begin at a level services budget and don't think creatively and innovatively around what we'd really like. So, we started the initial budget request with a fourteen point two eight percent increase. We did have some offsets, a Circuit Breaker specifically, further conversations with principals and directors. That brought a preliminary budget to eight point seven three percent. Again, further work as a team. We brought a superintendent's revised preliminary budget to the school committee last month. That was a three point nine nine percent. And again, the team continued its work and sharpening its pencils and thinking about what we wanted to accomplish. And this evening, we're presenting superintendent's recommended budget. That is a three point five percent increase over fiscal year twenty-three. So, what we tried to do on this table is really think about the budget drivers and show you the work that the leadership team did from the preliminary, revised preliminary, to recommended. Much of this work in the recommended column really is around getting better data, having better numbers, and thinking creatively around our resources. I will point out that out-of-district collaborative tuitions went from six hundred nine thousand seventy-one dollars to nine thousand seventy-one dollars. This is not as a result of that thing, we no longer have students who require services. It's really how we're applying our resources and Circuit Breaker money to this cost. When we look at transportation for special education, that has remained constant through the budget process. And then the ELA K through five curriculum professional development, it was in the revised preliminary, and it has been subtracted from the recommended budget, but we are pursuing grant opportunities to fund that request. And then electricity, we have a better number in terms of what our electricity costs will be for fiscal year twenty-four. And the total budget drivers is a little over one million dollars. In terms of budget offsets, so, Circuit Breaker, special education tuition reimbursement offset did increase significantly from the preliminary to revised, to recommended. And that is really how we are applying Circuit Breaker reimbursement to the fiscal year twenty-four budget. Becky and the finance team did do a forecast of special education costs over the next several years. And as a result, we're confident that we can apply more Circuit Breaker than we were anticipating, which again, offsets the overall impact to the budget. Circuit Breaker, special education, transportation reimbursement offset, so the Student Opportunity Act does allow for Circuit Breaker reimbursement for special education transportation. We are hoping to see an increase in this line item this year, again, with a new administration. And Governor Healy has signaled that she does anticipate funding SOA fully, which would have a positive impact on the reimbursement we'd get for transportation of special education students. And lastly, retirements and leave of absences, so January fifteenth typically is the timeline for announcements of teachers who will not be returning, or who will be taking leave of the absences. So, that number was a little less than we had thought, but we now have a better idea of what that number is. So, our recommended offsets is a little over one point five million. So, with all of our offsets, our special education adjustments, salary increases and COLAs, using S R three money, reduction of positions, and also applying facility rental revolving account funds, the total new offsets is a little over eight hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars. And the total offsets for this FY twenty-four budget is a little under two point five million dollars. So, the recommended budget this evening that we are presenting is twenty-three million, sixty-four thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars, which is a increase of seven hundred and seventy-nine, thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is a three point five percent increase over fiscal year twenty-three. So, fiscal year twenty-four impact of reductions, so a reduction of five positions. So the five positions really are positions that we've looked at, students who are exiting our system, who are going to the regional school system, and looking at students who are entering our system. So as a result, some of the special education supports that were required in the FY twenty-three budget are not required in that point twenty-four budget. And we spoke about utilization of Circuit Breaker, so one of the potential unintended outcomes could be that we have an unforeseen education, special education expense. However, I will share that we only used a fraction of the Circuit Breaker money for this budget, so the risk is low. We are using S R three money to offset FY twenty-four budget. We will have to amend that grant, but the finance team and Becky have done an excellent job trying to align her original request, S R three request, unto the needs of the FY twenty-four budget. We are applying some facility rental revolving account funds, which will reduce the amount available if there is an emergency. It doesn't deplete our facility rental revolving account to zero. We will still have some funds. However, if there is an emergency that exceeds our balance in that revolving account, we will have to go to the town and request additional funding. But again, we can't predict emergencies, and we'll have to react as we have in the past. Enrollment numbers are always subject to change, so in the FY twenty-three budget process, we made our best projections this summer due to increased enrollment. We did have to add two educators to be within the class size policy. Those two educators that we added in FY twenty-three are now included in the FY twenty-four budget. But again, enrollment is always an unknown, and this budget reflects our best thinking and our best data at this point in time. And then lastly, our level services budget does not allow for any unforeseen expenditures. However, typically, the budget that we present to the school committee for approval does not for, does not project any unforeseen expenditures. It is truly a budget based on what we think we'll need in the upcoming year. So what is not included in this budget were some positions that principals and directors requested. Those total left E's were equivalent to eight point three six educators for total costs of six hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred dollars. And again, this is part of the work that we talked about, really thinking about what we'd really like, to see if money were not an object, or not a concern. So, we have a special education teacher. So we have a special education teacher, social worker, and school adjustment counselor, and a .5 FTE speech and language pathologist. Those three positions were really centered around establishing a program, a therapeutic program, at one of our elementary schools. We've since learned that that program, due to our student population isn't required, but it was a request to try to think about adding a program in the future. We have a reading tutor position, a .5 FTE nurse, an ELD educator, health educator, a .2 FTE adaptive physical education teacher that would be shared between North Road, North Road, South Road District. So Southborough's portion would be .06. And we did talk about adding two world language educators to, again, establish that pre-K-3 world language program. And then lastly, a human resource generalist. Southborough's portion of a full-time position would be .3, and it'd be shared with a regional district in North Road. You know, we are 800 employees. We are pretty... It's important that we have a high level of employee service level, so that was a position that was requested. These positions are not in the budget before you this evening, but important to mention as future requests. Items that we moved from the budget, and we moved on to SRO III, so we are required to expend SRO III funds by the end of fiscal year '24. So we moved on to SRO III translations, SCL curriculum, middle school science curriculum, math curriculum, both at the elementary and middle school level, and then student staff devices. So we are using $141,861 of SRO funds. And we also moved on to SRO II, so this was originally in the FY '24 budget. An ELD kindergarten curriculum, so we actually were able to purchase that in FY '23 as a result of using SRO II. Not included in the budget are three items, and we are seeking grant funding to fund these important purchases. The first is a math, ST math, which is K-5, which is $22,000. A math screening and diagnostic assessment, which is a little under $2,000. And lastly, Dr. Reinhorn has applied for an ELA K-5 curriculum for professional development grant that will help offset that $144,450 cost. And also, the finance team working with Becky's leadership. We are also looking at using FY '23 end-of-year funds to purchase that ELA curriculum. Again, through good fiscal management and budgeting, we believe that we will have funds at the end of fiscal year '23 to make this purchase. And at this point, I will conclude the recommended budget presentation and would be happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions?
I have questions. Yeah, mine, just one on... Because I've had an opportunity to review this from being on the committee, but the world language update that we got today, that's not embedded in here, right?
Correct. So it's really, we're not adding no new world language program staff.
Okay.
What we're doing is really thinking about how can we best utilize that person
Yes.
to accomplish the goals that we hope to accomplish moving forward.
Yes, okay. That's all. Okay. So, okay, so the reduction of positions, those are all ESPs?
Potentially, yes.
Potentially, right. Okay, okay. But nothing?
And typically, what we see with our ESP population, it is the most... Has the most movement.
Right.
There's always attrition as a result of ESPs moving on to teaching positions
Right.
or deciding to do something different. We believe no one will be losing their positions as a result of...
Just sort of the natural flow of things?
Correct.
Okay. And then for the facility rental revolving account, so it's basically $90,000 just being moved from that account into the general operating budget?
So what we'll do is we'll expense facilities costs out to that rental revolving account, that's due to facilities. We take in facilities rentals for the rent of central office space.
Right.
Use of our facilities, like the gymnasiums.
ABC.
The SNV collaborative runs a program in our schools, so we still will be getting revenue in. But Brian Fantoni will expense from that account $90,000.
Okay, okay. So we're that much closer to, as you said, having to ask the town for money for some sort of emergency?
Correct, if there's an emergency.
Yeah, so have we made them aware that?
So when we did present to the select board, the boards and committees a few weekends ago, I believe, we did mention that this was the plan.
Yeah.
I think if we look at over the past five years, the emergency expenses that we've had in a single year have not been greater than $50,000.
Right.
So we have that amount.
Okay.
What we don't have, we don't have hundreds of thousands of dollars
Right.
if for some unforeseen accident happens.
Okay.
If some event happens.
Okay.
Whether ITV unit or...
Knock on wood.
Pice tree.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 go ahead.
Can I just follow on that?
Of course, yep.
And then try to come back to that, so... You know, when I see there's nothing in the preliminary, and nothing in the revised preliminary, and then all of a sudden, here it is, you know, the budget. Did that come up in the Saturday presentation? I probably just missed it. Okay. But that always makes me curious.
Yeah.
It just sort of shows up at the end. Sorry, Katura.
No, no, no.
Can I just comment too on that?
Yeah.
So we take in rent for the use of our facilities. It can't go to anything other than maintaining the facilities that we have. So we felt that it was a logical use of that money.
Okay, great. And then as far as SRO III and using those funds, and it does look to me, just based on my general knowledge of what the SRO III is supposed to be for, that these all fall in, you know, under the umbrella of the things. So that's great. What are the things that we were planning on spending SRO III on that are now not, we won't be?
Yeah, so one of... I'll give you an example.
Yeah.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong. We were planning on using SRO III for the amplification systems in classrooms.
Okay.
However, we were able to provide amplification systems to all classrooms throughout the district, elementary level, at the end of last year, using end-of-year funds.
Oh, okay.
So what we were planning on accomplishing with SRO III, we accomplished with end-of-year funds.
Mm-hmm.
That freed up some money to do some of the things we would like to do without an impact. We're also required to use 20 percent of SRO funds for learning loss.
Yes.
So there is a shift of some of the position on for that goal as well.
Okay.
So I think we've done, Becky's done a nice job aligning what we originally intended, our plan to accomplish, will accomplish through the changes that we've made.
So we haven't had to give up any of our big goals or anything? Okay, that's amazing. And then for the ELA K-5 curriculum, so, you know, we didn't have it in originally, then we had it in, then we... But it sounds like it's, I mean, because it sounds really necessary, so it sounds like we'll be able to accomplish that anyway. Is it from end-of-year funds or from a grant or a combination of both? Or I was just curious how likely we were to get the grant if we're waiting for, you know, for grant money?
It's a $144,000 question.
Yes.
You know, there's... We have been considering a variety of scenarios. If we got the grant, it would offset the cost of the resources. This particular grant wouldn't pay the full amount of resources, but it would pay for PD and 50 percent of the resources. Whenever you apply for a grant, like you have to see like what they give you. But we have been playing out all the scenarios. So if we get the grant, how will we do that? If we don't get the grant, you know, then what? So I think there's a little bit of a waiting game
Okay.
to know kind of how we go through the stairs. But we're spending lots of time thinking about
Okay.
other grants and other backup plans and...
Okay, great, great. Good for you for finding that. That's great. I think that was... That's it for me. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Then I start pulling this together, for sure, based on where we started. I guess we need a vote, if you don't have any other questions. So I would entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year '24 recommended budget of... Look at the two numbers. An increase of 3.5 percent, which is an amount of $779,975 increase, is presented tonight.
Should we say for a total budget of...
I'm sorry?
For a total budget of 23 million?
It's a good idea, for a total budget of $23,064...
Twenty-three million.
Twenty-three million, $64,418.
Some moves.
Moved by Kamali.
Second.
Second by Jen. Is there any further discussion on this? Will there be a public hearing on this?
So the March meeting? March?
Eighth, March eighth.
March eighth. Six... Five people?
It's at seven, because it's after the combined...
Yes, there will be a public hearing.
Yeah.
So then no other questions? All in favor? Opposed, carries unanimously? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All the work that went into this, which was, I'm sure, endless. So we're back to... Well, I guess we're moving to educational policy now at this time. Policy development and distribution now at this time. Personnel items.
So in your packet is the personnel report as February eighth.
Communications. Questions on personnel items, by the way? Communications done at this time. We've got two minutes to approve. It's the open meeting minutes of January 11th and the executive session minutes of January 11th. And we are retaining the executive session?
Correct.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve the Southborough Street Committee open meeting minutes of January 11th, 2023, and to approve the Southborough Street Committee executive session minutes of January 11th, 2023, to be retained. Are there any... Let's see, is there a motion?
Some moves.
Moved by Kamali.
Second.
Second by Katura. Any questions on those? All in favor? Opposed, carries unanimously? I think we're down to agenda items for next month. We've got, as you can see on the agenda, student support services review, and we talked about the warrant articles for town meeting. Anybody have anything else at this time they can think of that we should include?
Go ahead.
Is it too soon that we revisit the world language?
That's what I was going to ask.
And because like, working backwards from June, I figure like in March, maybe May again.
Where do you think? Makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll do that. What else? And remember, you think of something and we get it in long, you know, far enough ahead before we have to post. Wish everyone can do that. Now is the end of meeting public comments. Dave, any public comments? All right, here again. We shall adjourn to an executive session. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to...
Unless, unless it's a will of the committee not to. I don't think there's anything time-sensitive that we need to do this evening.
Well, I was wondering about that.
And we can have an executive session after the next March meeting.
You know what?
Yes, please.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Just moved.
Is that Jen?
Yes.
So moved by Jen. Second by...
Second, everybody, right?
To time. Well, Kamali's closer, all right. Second by Kamali. All in favor? It is unanimous, and we adjourn at 9:18 PM. And thank you very much.